Good evening and welcome to the City of Isani City Council Meeting for Tuesday, April 19th. Persistent to Minnesota Statute 13D.02, Councilmember Gordon will be participating in this meeting from Subway via Zoom at 945 Eagle Drive, Newtown, North Dakota, due to working out of the state. The public can view the council meeting in person or by visiting the website that's listed on our agenda, Facebook, et cetera, where you would find any city information. I would like to call this meeting to order if we could all rise for pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Doing roll call, all council members, well, four council members are physically present and Councilman Gordon is present via Zoom. Councilmembers keep in mind when voting, we do have to state our name and yea your name. Any public comment at this time? Step up to the podium if you would, sir, state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. A.J. Fiedler, 519 Birch Street, Southwest. Let me start by saying, I really don't want to be here tonight, and the reason I'm here, I shouldn't have to be here tonight. My wife tore her Achilles early last fall and damaged most of her leg beyond, under the kneecap. She's the breadwinner in the family, so we've fallen on some real hard times. I make enough money to get all but $300 of our house payment made every month, and that's the extent of our income. So needless to say, we've fallen behind on electric, gas, water, and every other bill we have. So we've had to suck up a lot of pride and accept some shame and reach out to the community for help. And we found that help through Lakes and Pines, and we had a water bill that needed to be taken care of that we got a delinquent notice for in January, and Lakes and Pines called, it was the end of January, early February, Lakes and Pines called to take care of our water bill then, get us caught up, and take care of the delinquent notice. And we were told, there's nothing to worry about because we don't shut, Isani, City of Isani doesn't shut anybody off in the winter, cold weather. Okay. So Lakes and Pines at that time said, there's nothing we can do if they won't take the money. So if they call, or if you get another disconnect notice come this spring, call us back and we'll take care of it then. So we got, I was in the hospital early April. We got a delinquent disconnect notice in the mail. We once again called Lakes and Pines, who we are working with the director of Lakes and Pines, not someone down the line, got all the paperwork taken care of, or we're told all the paperwork was taken care of, and that they were going to make a phone call on our behalf. Could we send them a digital picture of the delinquent notice? So we did, and they called, I believe it was the finance director, Mr. Betker, and he proceeded to tell the representative from Lakes and Pines that nobody in the City of Isani needed help. Now, he's claimed to one other city official that he never said that, and claimed to another city official that he doesn't recall saying that. Anyway, adds to our shame, adds to our fear getting our water shut off, of course, especially when we've got someone that's willing to pay it on our behalf. And so Lakes and Pine called us back and told us what was said, and said, I think you're going to have to call and tell the City of Isani that someone in Isani does need help. So we did that. We left a message with Mike. He never called us back. We left a message then with Tabitha, who I was told handles the water billing. So we left a message with her, and she did get back to us, and pretty much gave my wife the runaround, saying, well, we're not going to shut you off until May, so, you know, don't worry about that letter. You know, we don't shut off till May. And we work with Lakes and Pines before. You must not have filled out all your paperwork on your end. And this just went round and round and round. Needless to say, we wound up having to call the mayor. Reached out personally to the mayor to try and get this taken care of. And to my knowledge, the city still hasn't accepted the money to catch up our water bill on behalf, on our behalf. Supposedly the paperwork that the city didn't fill out, it wasn't on our end, but apparently paperwork the city has to fill out wasn't ever filled out. And so now we're waiting up to, I think Lakes and Pines told us two weeks, maybe three, before the money for the water assistance comes in once the paperwork from you guys is received. I shouldn't have had to call the mayor. Why won't you take money to take care of my past due water bill, regardless of who's wanting to pay it? I don't understand it. You wouldn't take it in February, and now again in April, you wouldn't take it.
So I can speak on behalf of this because you, you guys did call me. I appreciate the phone call, actually. I welcome the phone call from any resident in the city. Does not bother me one bit. Whether you feel you-
It bothered me. I shouldn't have to call you.
Well, whether you feel you should or shouldn't, sir, I, I'm here for you. You elected me to be your voice, and that's exactly what I do, as well as every council member up here. I personally called Mr. Becker. Mr. Becker said, well, as far as I knew, we had all of our paperwork in. Mr. Becker, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I'll look into it further. He called me the very next day, which I, I did call, reached back out to your wife, and said that, well, we found out we had our paperwork in for COVID money. We did not have our paperwork back in for anything else. Apparently was up. Is that, is that what, they did not tell you that?
There was no such thing as-
It wasn't COVID money for water bill assistance.
You can reiterate better on this, Mr. Becker than I can.
There wasn't a program started until the beginning of this year for water. There's for, for electricity and gas, there's been programs in effect, but they didn't do anything until the beginning of this year for water.
I know the city council, we weren't turning anybody off because we understood the hardship of the COVID era. So that was what this council decided, so maybe I'm confusing and crossing my communications. Mr. Becker, you can reiterate better on this than I can.
Yeah, the council approved enrolling with a program with Lakes and Pines, and we did do that at the beginning of this year. Money started to flow on that. My understanding now, having spoke to Lakes and Pines, was that that was only a low-income based program. And so the program that they did not tell us we needed to sign up for, I understood the paperwork was for everything, is for the disconnect, right? This is an expansion of the e-heat program, which would normally apply to electric and gas. That paperwork has been filled out, it's been submitted, and they said that they'll have money flowing by the end of the, by the end of this week.
So essentially-
And when I, and when I called them, they informed me that there were several residents that had applied, but they had not contacted me to say that I needed to fill out any additional paperwork, but that's been resolved.
It is an error and a cross in communication, which I wholeheartedly apologize. It's, it's an error not only in our end, but it's an error on their end. Thank goodness you called, because had you not called, we wouldn't, we probably wouldn't have caught that error, to be honest. But now we've caught it, it's been taken care of, and essentially in a week, you should be taken care of.
Okay. Thank you for the time. Just know that in this kind of situation, you already have way too much stress, way too many headaches, and way too many wolves at the door, and when you can try and knock one out with a payment, regardless of who it's from, it hurts and it adds to the shame campaign that's going on already when you won't take the money to catch us up. So we're still behind, we're still falling behind, and here's money, but form hasn't been filled out, someone doesn't want to fill the form out, someone didn't remember getting the form, whatever happened, it needs to be done better.
You're correct.
I guess I would like to know why we're sending out disconnect notices when you know for a fact that you're not shutting anyone down till the end of the month. The last delinquent notice that we got, received, said that you were going to shut our water off if payment wasn't given to the city by 4:30 on the 4th of April, knowing that that is not true, that you're not shutting anyone off until the end of April. Why are we, why are we sending out these notices, threatening, freaking people out?
It's not essentially a threat.
Why are we wasting, yeah, it is. Why are we wasting the money? Why are we wasting whoever in, in the city office had, it's their job to, to do all of that? Why are we going through all of that? Why are we sending out another notice on top of your water bill notice when you know you're not shutting anyone off? It's, it's quite frustrating. It's quite frustrating.
And for your case, I completely understand. I do. But not everybody's case is like this. There are people that are dodging their water bill. The city has to be paid.
I understand that.
And if we don't get paid, then essentially all of our taxes go up. I don't want that as a taxpayer.
I understand that, but you all knew that you were not shutting anyone off until the end of April, when our notice said that we were going to, we were going to shut your water off on the 4th of April, when that wasn't true, it wasn't going to happen until the end of April. That's what I'm saying. There was a date on that letter saying, we're shutting you off on this day at 4:30 if we don't have payment.
Why do we send those out so early?
I would, I, my understanding would have been that that would have been a delinquent notice, which goes out every month, not a disconnect notice. If, if you got a disconnect notice, all I could do is look into if that happened and why it happened, but-
It was a delinquent notice, you're right. It says delinquent on there, but it says if you don't pay your past due by 4:30 Tuesday, usually, I think it's the first Tuesday of the month, if you don't pay by 4:30, we're going to shut you off. Doesn't necessarily say at 4:30 we're going to shut you off, but if you aren't paid by the time City Hall closes, we're going to post your door, which is another $15, and then you're, we're going to shut you off, and then you're going to have to pay your past due, and, and, which I'm fine with. I get why you send them out, but if you're not going to, if you're not-
You're not going to follow through.
Follow through.
Yeah, we can, we can look into the language that's on the, on the notice.
Waste of money, taxpayer, taxpayer money, paper, envelope, stamps, and whoever stuffs the envelope and takes them to the post office. I can't imagine they're making less than-
I, I will say that I'm glad your situation is being taken care of, and, and don't feel it's a burden. That's what I'm here for. Call me anytime you need anything.
We appreciate it.
I definitely appreciate that, but I, we shouldn't have to.
You shouldn't, but I, I open arms welcome you to do so.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Step on up, ma'am, just state your name and, and address for the record, please.
Tammy Gimple, 22359 Baton Street, Northeast, East Bethel. Isani Mayor and Council, I'm standing before you tonight because I was told by someone to watch your last meeting. And after watching it, I'm not only appalled by what I saw, but also extremely disturbed. I'm here tonight to set the record straight. You allowed and took the word of someone that not only has harassed me and my business for four years, but is also a non-resident of the City of Isani. Someone with no skin in the game, for lack of a better saying. What Christine Dahlman did that night was commit a crime, and that has been sent to the county attorney. I have taken the high road for four years now and not even tried to defend myself against these Facebook warriors who like to sit behind a keyboard and make up stories about good people and good businesses. Shocks me to see mayors and council members being one of them. Since when did we become a society of where we live our lives off of Facebook and social media? I've been in the business of animal control for over 15 years now and not have, have not had one violation, and I've inspected by both the Board of Animal Health and the city every single year. You clearly do not know how animal control works in your own city, when you got visibly upset by the words coming out of Christine Dahlman's mouth. You actually believed that I stole a dog, and yet there was no police report, and when you even asked your own officer, he stayed there were no complaints about me. So you chose to believe Christine Dahlman over your own police officer, and you shall be ashamed. By the way, I do not appreciate the veiled threats from council. Animal control is dispatched out by your police department in your city. We don't drive around stealing dogs.
I think it's only fair to, I think it's only fair to say we went with the other group, just, at the end, it was just cost, wasn't it?
Exactly what it was.
That was my motion.
Yeah, it was, I mean, it was, that's why I'm looking at you, because you-
It's exactly what it was, it was cost.
It came down to cost. I certainly wasn't taking that gal's word for, I forget who she was.
I stated that we should have seen both sides, so I stated that.
But I think when, I think when Councilman Collison read the, read the cost of each one, we went with the one up in Old Levee. What was that name again?
It doesn't matter.
It doesn't matter, but anyway, it was a cost comparison more than, I don't think we went because of what that gal said.
No. We listened to her.
Yeah, we listened to her.
We listened to her, just like, we just listened to Ms. Gimple. That's what we're here for. But ultimately came down to cost, and that's the bottom line. Anybody else that'd like to speak on public comment? All right, then we'll move on then to, we're going to add K3, I see. So do I have a motion to adopt the agenda adding K3, a wave late fee for utility payment, and Ms. Christine Schultz?
Motion to accept.
Motion to accept by Councilman Hope. I have to do the roll call. So, motion to accept by Councilman Lundine, and a second by Councilman Burgley. All in favor, state your name and say aye.
Oh, Burgley, aye.
Steve Lundine, aye.
Dan Collison, aye.
Jimmy Gordon, aye.
And Jeff Johnson, aye. All in, all opposed, same sign? Motion carries 5-0. We will move on to approval of the city council minutes for April 5th, which was a regular meeting of city council.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve by Councilman Lundine, and a second by Councilman Collison. All in favor, state your name and say aye.
Oh, Burgley, aye.
Steve Lundine, aye.
Dan Collison, aye.
Jimmy Gordon, aye.
And Jeff Johnson, aye. All opposed, which there is none because we've passed that, all 5-0. Moving on to announcements, city council meeting will be Tuesday, May 3rd at 7:00 PM, and an economic development authority meeting will be Tuesday, May 3rd as well, immediately following that council meeting, and park recreation and culture board meeting will be Tuesday, April 26th at 6:00 PM. Are there any council committee reports? None at this time. We'll move on to the public hearings for our MS4 presentation.
Do you have an air reader here, or are you at?
It's me. I want to share my screen, so.
Should have recorded it earlier.
That would have been great. Sorry, I need to share my screen. Good evening, Mayor and Council, tonight I am presenting the annual MS4 report that we are required to do from the MS4 permit that we hold from the MPCA. So a little background, it was developed as the municipal separate stormwater sewer system was developed as part of the 1972 Clean Water Act, and MPCA initiated an MS4 in 2007, and the City of Isani became an MS4 in 2016, generally when a city becomes over 5,000 in population. The permit gives authorization to discharge stormwater, and the permit was reauthorized to the State of Minnesota in 2021, and new best management practices were, must be implemented by the end of this year. So they have new items that are identified on the permit for this year. And the city implements these practices through regulatory mechanisms, education, and outreach, and environmental protection. We have a few partners in the MS4. Bolton and Mank, we rely on a lot for helping us with stormwater engineering. Isani Soil and Water Conservation District, the Minnesota Board of Water and Soil Resources, the Clean Water Land and Legacy Amendment. We work with the City of Cambridge on providing presentations to our local schools, the MPCA, and the Minnesota Department of Natural Resources. Our annual report is due of June 30th every year. We're almost done with our report, and it is part of the MS4 permit requirement. I must go over the illicit discharges that we've had in 2021, and we had five reported in 2021, four which were found by city staff, and one was by public complaint. An illicit discharge, and our enforcement actions were nine verbal warnings to contractors or homeowners, and two violation letters were issued. Most of our illicit discharges are in the form of construction illicit discharge, which is often with edging, I guess, boundaries aren't in place, or dirt tracked onto our streets because of the amount of construction we have.
Can you explain that? So you're telling me there's more than one complaint per discharge, because I see nine verbal warnings and two violations?
Yes. If people don't comply, we have to send out multiple, multiple letters, and often follow verbal warnings up with letters.
I think what he's trying to get at is you've got 11 enforcements, but only five discharges, so.
Yep, so it's just to, it's just follow up for those-
A lot of times a city, when you build on a house, you got to put in silk fence, or you got to put in the socks that have absorbance in it, and if the builder's socks or silk fence is damaged, or down, or the sock isn't in place, even though it wasn't discharging, it was, they had to get a verbal warning, or a written warning on it.
Correct, and we give people timeframes depending on what the listed discharge is, and so sometimes they have seven days, sometimes they have 24 hours, and if it's not completed within those times, we'll send out another warning.
Some cities require the builders to have the streets, have somebody come out in separate, an independent company come out and sweep the streets, or the contractor has to go out and clean the streets, scrape the streets. Sometimes we're not even allowed to park on the roads because of mud on the roads, it's, Isani isn't the only one that does this.
We try to limit it as much as possible.
Thank you.
I guess findings included the seven conditions that were violated and must, or, in, sorry, in February of 2022, we were audited by the MPCA for MS4, which usually happens every seven years, and this is our first time being audited in my first month, so it's pretty exciting. Findings included seven conditions that were violated and must be updated for the new permit, and so I've listed them here. On condition one, the permittee, which is the city, must document the following information, which is all relevant written input submitted by persons regarding the SWIP. So for every construction site, we have to require now a form filled out for the SWIP, and so we are, we began that process immediately, which is the Stormwater Pollution Prevention Program.
I'm surprised you didn't make Ryan do this, to be honest with you, Steph. I totally am, because I know who does this, and it's not Stephanie.
I get to deal with the fun stuff.
You do!
But Ryan is the one who is doing-
He's the boots on the ground.
Condition two, to the extent allowable under state or local law, the permittee must conduct additional illicit discharge inspection in areas identified in item 18.10, which means that if we see any high, any places that are known for having a lot of violations, any sites or areas of construction that are ongoing, then we need to follow up and visit those sites, inspect them regularly. Ryan does that weekly, every Wednesday.
See, I thought you did it twice a week. Are you down to once a week now? You're a part-timer.
We only have to do it once every seven days, and then once if there is more than half an inch of rain.
Gotcha.
24 hours following the rain.
That makes sense. All right, maybe you're not such a part-timer, take that back, Ryan.
Condition three, the permittee must document the following information, dates and locations of the inspections, and the reports of alleged illicit discharge received, which we were doing. We just had to add a few more things to our spreadsheet to identify yes, no. We were checking off only when we saw an illicit discharge, but now we need to be checking off every date that we don't see one.
No matter what, they're saying.
Some cities don't allow, they won't even allow inspections until those are in place. So if there is a, if there is a problem, they won't issue an inspection. So most builders have to jump on it right away, or they don't get their closings, or they don't get their framing, they don't get any of their inspections done, so.
We will withhold escrow if everything isn't done properly, so we have to attend to that also.
So can inspections move forward then? Just withhold?
We're trying not to uphold up the construction process, but we want them to know that this is important.
They have to do it right.
Condition four, for each training in item 18.8 and 18.9, the permittee must document a general subject matter covered, names, departments of individuals in attendance, and date of each event. And the same with condition five, which is for direct city staff. This was not really an oversight, but because of the number of staff turnover that we've had in the last few years, we used to have an MS4 dedicated staff person, and after you left-
We've only had two, you're making it sound like there's quite a bit.
But he was here before, so everything was following under his guise.
Cory and Sheila, right?
Nope.
Who was that?
There was one more.
Was there one more?
But after that happened, after he had left, Cory, then there hadn't been any additional staff trainings done. Sheila and Ryan had done training, but no one else had, and they would like everybody who has anything to do with MS4, and all police department and all public work staff to have training in MS4, stormwater, illicit discharge, and-
That's because the police could potentially catch it, I'm assuming, and report it.
It's just because they're driving around more regularly.
That's more stuff you got to do, chief.
So, yes.
You were a little concerned over that.
So we have implemented new training and already started. They love it.
They love it.
Condition six, the permittee must implement a stormwater management training program. And a lot of these are with the training again, so this is for myself and Ryan to really have more in-depth training, as well as Matt Sylvester and Matt Small, who are on job sites and working with stormwater ponds. Condition seven, that we must document the following information associated with operations and maintenance, so all illicit discharges, as well as the maintenance of all of our stormwater ponds, inlets, everything, which we already had started doing, but it's a new condition from what I understand. And we have to follow minimum control measures, and so our SWIP includes public education and outreach, public participation, elimination of illicit discharges, construction site runoff controls, post-construction runoff controls, and pollution prevention and municipal good Public education, we do a rain garden incentive program, and we post information in the Isanian, and there are resources on our city website for municipal stormwater education. We're also participating in a water festival booth for the fourth graders with the City of Cambridge, as well as an eighth grade career fair. Elimination of illicit discharges. Reporting for residents is available on the City of Isani website, so if anybody needs to find the form, it's on there. We have response procedures written, and it's covered under ordinance 670, and community developments-
Does that list, what you can and can't dump down, dump down the drain or the-
You cannot dump anything.
You can't dump anything. Oh, okay.
Not grass clippings, dirt, nothing, go even on the street.
That's why they get pretty wild about blowing grass in the street.
And what's silly is, I never, it's not really silly, but I didn't know grass clippings was that imperative until I got in the seat, and, oops.
Community development specialist-
Now I don't do it, but, I never knew that. I mean, that's what I mean, is the education on this should be- microphoned to everybody. I mean, it's, it's crazy.
And you can get a big slap on the wrist if we don't follow through with these, this letter of warning. We could have even more stringent restrictions. I know some cities have to go out daily.
What size does that have to be? We're, we got five thousand, we had to join this one. Do we get to the next level and have to go out daily then after that, or?
I think it's if you get too many slaps on the wrist for not following.
Let's hold it at seven there, Steph.
We'll have zero.
There we go.
A few next time.
I mean, it's kind of horrible. You got attacked your first month working for the city, but.
Construction site runoff controls, site inspection checklist. Um, it's developed and maintained by the community development specialists in the minimum, minimum inspection period is every seven days. And this was developed and updated this year, and the priority sites procedure was also developed. And post-construction stormwater management, it's developed and written procedures for site plan reviews prior to the start of construction activity. Tracked and enforced erosion control procedures, civil penalty penalties for violation. Under development and enforcement, a response procedure is implemented. And pollution prevention and good housekeeping is prepare a facilities inventory, which we have done and is on our GIS system, and identify current stormwater practices, and implement a good housekeeping procedure. So we definitely implemented all the things that were in the ERP, and all of the items that we were not following through on before, or now being done. And in the future, we're addressing conditions outlined in the audit letter of warning, um, which have all been completed except for, um, just ensuring we have the exact schedule of trainings, which we're turning in next week, and then we should be complete. We're increasing our public outreach and training, and continuing implementation and improvement of the SWIP, and our enforcement response procedures. And we're partnering with Bolton and Mink in our current active construction sites in Legacy Pines, Heritage Estates, Fairway Greens, through consultation.
So that audit, we got your first month here, that was where all those future things came from? We had to correct a whole bunch of stuff, is that what you're saying?
Seven.
Seven things?
There's seven things. Most pertain to training and outreach.
Oh, okay.
But you're being attacked in your first month. You're not gonna know too much. I'm surprised it was only seven. Kudos to you for only seven, but let's get zero.
Right, that's the goal.
Any questions by the council? This is a public hearing.
You need to open the public hearing.
So I'll open the public hearing on this item at this time. If there's anybody that would like to speak on this matter, feel free to step up to the podium and state your name and address for the record, please. Nobody at this time. We'll close the public hearing then. Any questions, concerns, or comments by the council? Other than, let's have zero. I mean, to be fair, she got attacked in her first month of working for, hey, welcome to ICANN. Take that.
Uh, Steph and Ryan are doing a good job, so, thank you.
Thanks to both of you for sure. We'll move on to business items then. Uh, K one is a resolution accepting the two thousand and twenty-one annual financial report and management letter, uh, from, I'm gonna hack that name. But I remember Steve. What is this, dude? Winner don't want to give up, so you don't either, huh? Right? I hear that. Good to see you as always, sir.
All right, good evening, Mayor, Council. Um, thank you for the opportunity to present the two thousand and twenty-one audit.
Steve, will you turn that mic a little bit closer so it picks up your voice?
Is that better?
I hope so.
All right.
Councilman Gordon can't see what's going on. We're gonna share with you, Jimmy. Give us a second. There you go. He's good. Let's just go.
All right, I think we're all right. Okay, well, uh, what I'm gonna go through is the, um, the results of the audit, and then some of the financial highlights, and then, um, uh, some context points of key performance indicators. So, uh, to, to start with, um.
It's not going for him. There we go.
Very good. All right, so the, um, what, what you really hire us to do is give an opinion on the financial statements. Our processes that we go through, uh, the records of the city, uh, we look at the financial transactions, we do certain tests, and ultimately it results in us giving an opinion on whether the financial statements are materially correct. Uh, we met the objective of that audit and, and gave a unmodified opinion. That's the highest level of assurance you can get in this process, so that's great. We also test certain provisions of state statutes. Uh, things like if you bid a project, uh, did you follow a certain process, or how you pay bills, uh, how you deposit money, spend money, those kind of things. Uh, state has specific statutes around that area. And, um, through the results of our tests, we didn't have any, uh, compliance findings. So again, that's good. The, uh, the, we also consider internal control of the city, uh, as we work through the audit. Um, how, uh, uh, certain transactions are segregated, or, uh, controls that are in place to make sure that, uh, there's no misappropriation or those kind of things. And we had one, what would be considered one finding related to the preparation of financial statements. And this isn't necessarily bad, this is more of a small city comment. Uh, what this is saying is that there's one person involved in, in preparing and having acceptance of the financial statements. And you can't have an internal control process with just one person in place. And so our job is to report this as a, as a reportable condition for council, just to be aware. Um, we can't be part of your, uh, internal controls. So, uh, again, Mike is the one responsible. He does a great job of getting the records together, uh, of checking the work that's done, and, um, we don't see this as an issue. Uh, we feel like there are mitigating controls, again with his experience. I think that, uh, I don't see a large risk with this. Okay? Um, looking at the numbers now, we have some, uh, highlights of the general fund. And, um, what you see here is fund balance at the end of twenty-one, represented forty percent of the following year's budget, so the two thousand and twenty-two budget. Your fund balance at the end of the year was forty percent. You have a target of fifty percent. I would say that anything from thirty to fifty percent is an adequate working capital range. And you can see that you've been in that range, uh, for each year presented. So maintaining fund balance i- in that level is enough to pay the bills for the first five months of the year. Uh, general fund is generally budgeted about break even. And, um, so having that working capital reserve is important to continue to, uh, fund operations. And looking at the, uh, results of operations for twenty-one, uh, what you would see here is overall, the fund balance increased two hundred and nine thousand dollars from the prior year, uh, so the middle column, third row up. Um, your budget had indicated there'd be an increase of forty-six thousand dollars. So it's favorable, your budget results are favorable at a hundred and sixty-two thousand, eight thirty. Um, the, uh, few of the drivers of that spending was under budget, and that was across all departments. Uh, revenues came in, um, ninety-two thousand under, uh, under plan, uh, but then you didn't transfer out a hundred and thirteen thousand dollars. So, uh, a lot of pieces in play there. Key thing to remember is that fund balance went up two hundred and nine thousand. Uh, looking over a three-year history of, um, your revenue by sources and your expenditures by department, uh, you can see that, that taxes have been pretty consistent for the three years presented. The intergovernmental, uh, increased in twenty and twenty-one, mostly related to the, um, cares, uh, or federal funding that came through the city. And then on the expenditure side, you see pretty consistent expenditure results for each of those, uh, three years in the departments presented. So general government, public safety, public works, and the other category are, are mostly consistent. Um, the city also maintains other funds outside of the general fund. Uh, the first group is the special revenue fund balances. Um, key things here are overall fund balance, when you add them all up, total eight hundred and twenty-one thousand. Uh, and that's an increase of twenty-six thousand from the prior year. Uh, the indoor arena does have a deficit of a hundred and forty-four thousand, but you count on, uh, revenue in excess of expenditures to buy down that deficit, and over time that will be eliminated. Um, uh, you also have a, a series of funds called capital project funds. And in total, there's a deficit of two hundred and eighty-two thousand at the end of the year in fund balance. Um, a couple of points of explanation, the street construction, you've received advanced funds for, from MSA to help pay for projects, and that's been enough to cash flow that fund. Future collections of that will eliminate that deficit. Your capital replacement fund has a deficit of a hundred and sixty-three thousand. You have sufficient, uh, internal, um, uh, loans and transfers that will be made to eliminate that as well. So, um, overall, uh, when, when you, although you see a deficit fund balance, there are funding sources, uh, over the next few years to eliminate those, and that's the important thing. Now, debt funds, uh, these are all the debt service funds, the, uh, outstanding. Uh, at the end of the year, you have three point three million dollars in bonds outstanding. Um, one of the points of the story here is that, that you did do a refunding bond in two thousand and twenty-one. That tax, twenty-one tax abatement bonds, uh, has, has paid off the, um, old bonds with what you had issued in twenty-one. So those will go down significantly, uh, when we report next year at the end of twenty-two. Okay, uh, now the enterprise funds, so water, sewer, uh, stormwater, and liquor, all have, uh, uh, really good results, uh, reported for this year, and really trending for the last several years. Water fund, you can see that orange line at the top, uh, that's the revenue or the operating receipts for the water fund, so, uh, cash collected from the bills. Has been sufficient to pay operating expenses and the debt service that's outstanding. And, um, it's allowed you to build the adequate, uh, reserve in the water fund. And we'll see the same thing when we look at the sewer fund. Again, revenue in excess of bond payments outstanding and operating expenses. Cash balance at the end of the year is about four point eight million dollars. And, um, uh, when planning future projects, that's gonna be allocated to those. Stormwater, um, the, uh, revenue has exceeded the operating expenses, and we also have a good cash balance. So, uh, in each of the three main operating funds, it's generating positive cash flow uh, to provide for the current operations, plus help build reserves for future capital. Okay, the liquor store fund, um, I'll go to the graph here. The, um, the big things here are that, uh, cash balance at the end of the year is one point two million. Uh, the important thing to note here is that you still have unspent bond proceeds at the end of twenty-one, uh, that total five hundred and sixty-four thousand. So that's a little big reason for the spike, uh, from twenty to twenty-one. The, um, key things that we look at at a liquor fund are, are gross profit. So that twenty-five percent that's identified there is the, uh, gross profit. Uh, so sales minus the cost of the inventory leaves twenty-five percent, uh, to, to pay the bills. And that's about in line with, um, statewide averages, but a little bit less than the prior year. So that's something to pay attention to. Um, that can be a number of things. You set up a new store, you had a lot of inventory. Adjusting to the new space could be part of it, and, um, keeping up with, uh, with pricing and inflation is, uh, is one of the key actions that come out of that. Overall, okay, total cash over the past three years, if you look at all of the funds the city combined, uh, there's about thirteen and a half million dollars. Most of that is in the enterprise funds. Uh, it's the large green line, um, or green bar. And, um, consistent for each of the three years presented. So hea- um, healthy cash balances, uh, to keep funding the city projects and operations. Um, we include a few key performance indicators. These give just a picture of the last four years, and often are, are the things that bond rating agencies look at. But let's start with the tax rates. Overall, tax rates have been consistent the last three years. You can see a decrease in twenty-one from, uh, two thousand and twenty. Tax rate was sixty point four percent, uh, compared to sixty-one. And then for all cities in Iscany County, you can see you're quite a bit lower than the comparable cities. And then taxes per capita also, uh, if you look at comparable cities, you can see the taxes per capita trends lower than the, uh, other ones presented. Uh, debt, um, things we look at here are the total amount of debt expenditures on a per capita basis. And then as a debt expenditures as a percent of the total expenditures. That's often a measurement that bond rating agencies look at. How much of what you spend, uh, is on debt. So at ten percent, you can see you're consistent with, um, the comparable, uh, results that we have there. The, um, uh, expenditures, uh, on a per capita basis compared with, uh, the cities in Iscany County, in what are termed class four cities, that's a state auditor designation based on population. You can see the current expenditures on a per capita basis are less than, uh, the, the comparable that we have as well. Capital expenditures, those are gonna fluctuate year over year because projects don't happen in a linear fashion. They happen as you need them, so you can see you've had more capital expenditures in the last couple of years on a per capita basis, but still under, uh, what the, uh, class four cities have been. Okay, so that's a lot of stuff thrown at you. I think the key message is, again, healthy cash balances, um, uh, good working capital reserve in the general fund, and, um, uh, strong performance in all of your enterprise funds. So, uh, the, as far as the audit process itself went, uh, city was well-prepared. Uh, we got our work done timely, um, and again, very, very few corrections or the kind of things that you'd need to know about. So, uh, city did a great job preparing for the audit.
Any questions by the council?
Well, thank you, Mr. Becker and his crew, for being well-prepared.
Appreciate your time and effort, Steve, as always. I'm, I'm, uh, happy to see you once a year, but I'm glad it's only once a year. Do we need a motion on this, Mike?
I make a motion to accept the report.
Motion to accept the report by Councilman Lundin, second by Councilman Burgley. All in favor, state your name and say aye.
Paul Burgley, aye.
Steve Lundin, aye.
Dan Collison, aye.
Jimmy Gordon, aye.
And Jeff Johnson, aye. Uh, nobody's opposed, therefore, that passes five-zero.
Thanks, Steve.
All right, thank you. I appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you, sir. We'll move on to business item K two, a resolution approving a special event permit application for Walk for Life.
Good evening again, Mayor and Council. Um, we have received an application for the Walk for Life located, um, on the bike path and in Bluebird Park. Like they do, have they've done annually for quite some time now, from what I understand. Do you have any questions?
I like the approximate attendance thirty to fifty, and you're gonna be blown away when you get more than that. Because that's always a good turnout for that. I love that Walk for Life.
I make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilman Lundin, and a second by Councilman Collison. All in favor, state your name and say aye.
Paul Burgley, aye.
Steve Lundin, aye.
Dan Collison, aye.
Jimmy Gordon, aye.
And Jeff Johnson, aye. Therefore, passes five-zero with nobody opposing. Uh, we'll move to the K three that we added, which was waive the late fee for utility payment by Christine Schultz.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve by Councilman Lundin, and a second by Councilman Burgley. All in favor, state your name and say aye.
Aye, Paul Burgley.
Aye, Steve Lundin.
Aye, Dan Collison.
Jimmy, Jimmy Gordon, aye.
And Jeff Johnson, aye. Motion carries four-one. Anything we need to discuss in the consent agenda, gentlemen?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve that consent agenda by. Motion to approve that consent agenda by Councilman Lundin and a second by Councilman Burgley. All in favor, state your name and say aye.
Paul Burgley, aye.
Steve Lundin, aye.
Dan Collison, aye.
Jimmy Gordon, aye.
And Jeff Johnson, aye. Motion carries five zero. I have a motion to adjourn by Councilman Burgley.
Second.
Second by Councilman Lundin. All in favor, state your name and say aye.
Paul Burgley, aye.
Steve Lundin, aye.
Dan Collison, aye.
Jimmy Gordon, aye.
And Jeff Johnson, aye. Motion carries five zero, therefore we stand adjourned.
Sit tight, Jimmy.